So this is our last meeting of the year. I do want to wish my fellow board members and everybody who certainly helps us throughout the year, happy holidays and thank you again for your service for the whole year. It's, you know, we work as a great team getting everything done, moving along, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
On tonight's agenda, I have a number eight, so...
Yeah.
Okay. Little sound effects here.
Come roll.
And that's how you start a meeting.
Moving right along. Okay, so two things. Number one, snow in the event that you are, you have to be back for next week's, next month's meeting and it snows, there is no postponement of our meetings if town hall is closed. If you are scheduled for a public hearing, we do ask that you update your sign to reflect the February meeting date, okay? So if you're scheduled for a public hearing for January and for whatever reason the meeting gets canceled because of snow, then you just have to update your sign. And the other thing is, we are limiting the number of people that are in the room with us this evening. We've left the doors open because the other applicants, the later applicants on our agenda are actually waiting out in the hall. So we will ask, as you will finish this evening and as you leave, that you please leave through the door over there, not this one over here, because there's a little tripping hazard with the cords there, but if you go through that one and then just go around and you can exit either the front door or the side door there, actually the side door.
Either way.
Okay. All right, so with that said, our next two meetings are going to be Tuesday, January 26th and Tuesday, February 23rd. We have one set of minutes to approve. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of our November 24th meeting with a couple amendments to them?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so the first thing up this evening, we do have one public hearing this evening, which is an application that this board's already had an opportunity to review. So at this point, it's important for us to be able to hear from any of the neighbors of this applicant. And then after that, the rest of our agenda is just all reviews, which is generally the first time that we've seen, that we've seen applications, although there are a couple repeat customers this evening, so. So with that said, item number one is Appeal 3976, Daniel Woods. Daniel Woods, 106 Boxwood Circle, Hopewell Junction is requesting a five-foot sideline variance for a generator pursuant to section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance and a one-foot sideline variance for an existing shed pursuant to section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Woods.
Good, how are you?
So we did have an opportunity to review your application with you last month. You live in the Four Corners development, so, which is a cluster development, so you have generally smaller lots than most lots in town. And so you were looking to put a generator on the, on the one side of a house where the utilities feed through and your panel is there and, you know, so it just makes sense. Our discussion last time around was that it just made sense for the, you know, for it to be on that side of the house. I did notice that you did speak with your neighbor.
Yes.
Because he actually sent a letter, so at the appropriate time, I'll read that into the record. But again, based on our initial review of this, you know, it appeared that the generator was in the appropriate place for your home, so are there any questions or comments from board members?
I'm good.
No, I'm good.
And I guess just noticed part of what the comments are, that he does have homeowner's association approval for this as well.
Good, thank you. So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Daniel Woods, 106 Boxwood Circle, Hopewell Junction, requesting a five-foot sideline variance for a generator and a one-foot sideline variance for an existing shed? I'm going to read into the record the one letter that we did receive. Dated December 15th, 2020, I am in receipt of the letter from the Town of East Fishville Zoning Board of Appeals. Unfortunately, we will not be able to make the public hearing regarding variance requested by Mr. Daniel Woods, 106 Boxwood Circle, Hopewell Junction. I have discussed the request for variance with Mr. Woods. We are in agreement with his request for the variance proposal. If any questions or concerns, please feel free to reach out to me. Sincerely, Dr. Wasik Ashraf. So with that, is anybody else wishes to speak for or against? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. This is Appeal number 3976, applicant is Daniel Woods, requesting a five-foot sideline variance for the requirements of the bulk, schedule of bulk regulations for a generator and a one-foot sideline variance for the requirement of section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance for an existing shed, the variances. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Hassan, whereas the applicant has applied for a five-foot sideline variance for a proposed generator and a one-foot sideline variance for an existing shed pursuant to section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. And whereas the property is located in Four Corners, which is a cluster subdivision with smaller lots than those normally found in an R1 zone, and whereas the applicant has stated that the generator will only be used when his home loses electricity, and he has proposed the most logical placement for, next to the utility connections, and whereas the homeowner association has already approved the request for a generator, and whereas the shed has been there for many years, and whereas this action is a type-two action under secret, and no further action is required, and whereas a legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on December 16th, 2020, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on December 22nd, 2020, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce any, an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, as the applicant will provide adequate screening for the generator and the shed has been in its current location for many years, the desired result can, can be achieved by some other means, but this is the most efficient location to place the generator. The variance, variances requested are not substantial, and the variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves a request by Daniel Woods, 106 Boxwood Circle, Hopewell Junction, for, one, is five-foot sideline variance for the requirements of the schedule of bulk regulations for a generator on the condition that the applicant adequately screens the generator with shrubbery, and, two, a one-foot sideline variance from the requirement of section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance for an existing shed. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Sure, second?
Second.
All right, I'll let you decide which one said it first. All right, votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries, you're all set, okay? Now you just deal with the building department, okay? But please, go through that door. Thank you. You two...
Merry Christmas. Happy New Year.
Great, so that's it for our public hearings this evening, so the rest are reviews. So our first review is item number two, Appeal 3974, Lori Joseph Builders, Inc. Lori Joseph Builders, 80 Fishville Hook Road, Hopewell Junction is requesting a seventy-five foot side, sideline variance from I-84 for a future dwelling pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations, 194, Attachment Three, Note 11 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
So we did have an opportunity to review this two meetings ago and discuss with you the fact that we were concerned about the topography and about the wetlands and other things, conditions on this lot, that we wanted to see if there was a way that you could incorporate a garage into the home so that it would limit the need for any future variance or any future, you know, construction on the, on the lot by the future homeowner. So I know you've given us a revision, so if you don't mind just taking us through what you're suggesting.
So we've added a garage on the...
An attached garage?
Attached garage.
Yes, thank you.
Which is fitted during the elevation. We have also shown that there's an area on the property that a future shed could go without needing a variance. There's five hundred feet, which should be changed there, so we have on the demonstration.
Okay.
If somebody wanted to shut on it, it would be setbacks. And so we've added a garage, but by doing so, we've added additional fifteen foot variance on the front.
Right, which, which we had said, if we're, if we're doing this to make sure we're really giving an appropriate home with the amount of storage that somebody would need, we would consider doing that. So it's an extra fifteen feet that it comes out? That's it?
Correct.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, so questions or comments from board members?
I have a question. The, the front elevation that you gave on the Fishville Hook Road showed no entrance. Is there a garage? I mean, because the one...
This is the garage, and you would, and with the garage, it would come down off of Fishville Hook Road here and then...
Oh, okay, okay, then, okay, it makes sense now, because I was trying to figure out, it wasn't very clear from the front, how you would enter. So you'd go around the steps, basically, or somehow, or right next to the steps, I guess?
Correct.
Okay, perfect, I'm good.
No, I'm good, because basically just, we had, we talked about the last meeting, so I have no question.
I think this makes it...
Yeah, it makes, my last, again, I would echo the expression of appreciation. We had a good review last time. The elevation you give is still quite attractive elevation for a proposed house, and I think this will suit the new owners, whoever buys it, much better. Thank you.
And I know the applicant meant with the town engineer, and the tenant's been aware, and as far as staff goes, we would have no issue if the board set a public hearing for next time.
Okay, so the only question I have is, does the garage come any closer to I-84 than the existing house was? It, okay, it looks like it wouldn't, but I just want to be sure.
Follow the lane of the, of land to the...
That's what we figured, okay.
It's still right there, it's on the...
Okay, so the variance being requested for the I-84 sideline does not change, but we do need to add a front line variance, Jackie, to the request, okay?
Fifteen foot.
So do I have a motion to okay this for public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We will see you next month.
Thank you so much, everyone, have a great day.
Now, you need, you need a sign. You don't need a sign on I-84, we're not going to do that. The last thing I want to do is distract any drivers on I-84, so I think just the one sign should be plenty, right? You guys agree?
I agree. One sign is more than enough.
Okay, so just...
And I would give the sign.
Jackie's going to give you your...
Great, thank you so much.
I'm going to give you crayons and paper.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Now it's working, yes. Technical issues here.
Keep it out.
Okay. Item number three, Appeal 3977, Dorothea Monroe. Dorothea Monroe, 2 Jennifer Drive, Wappingers Falls, is requesting a five-foot front yard variance from Jennifer Drive for the existing dwelling, including the porch, a fifty-one foot front line variance for the dwelling from Hillside Lake Road, including the existing deck, a sixty-foot front line variance for an existing shed, a two-foot height variance to have two hundred and fifty linear feet of a six-foot fence in the front yard pursuant to section 198, 194-98 of the zoning ordinance, and a front yard variance to allow the existing shed, an eight-foot by ten-foot shed, to be located in the front yard pursuant to section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. The parcel has three front yards. So Ms. Monroe is not here. When we met with her last month, we did ask her to get a couple more measurements on her survey. She had gotten a recent survey and just, there were just things that were missing. She's got a very difficult yard to work with, for, you know, information purposes. I live right around the corner, I walk by this house nearly every day, so I am definitely well aware of the lot. So it's, she's got, the way Jennifer Drive hooks around, it covers two holes, two sides of her property, and then Hillside Lake Road is the other. So her house is actually very close to Hillside Lake Road, and, you know, the traffic that's on there, it is very disturbing, and just in terms of the noise element and et cetera. So there is an existing fence there that we will be asking her to remove. As we discussed, it's like an old post and wire fence that's just literally falling down anyway, and literally I had to wa, when I saw it on the survey, I had to walk by there just to see where their fence was, because it was, it's just collapsing there. And so she's, she's, she's looking to put in a black fence that, actually she special ordered because it's a fence that will support any kind of heat, you know, so it doesn't melt or anything like that, so. So I think she's met all the requirements of what we've asked for. The only thing is, I think she was going to ask for a second shed, a proposed shed, and so we have to incorporate that, but she didn't specifically tell us, so she's going to get back to Jackie before we need to send the notice out.
Right.
But in reality, this lot, because it's just not wide enough since the, you know, for the hundred-foot setback from Hillside Lake Road now, because that's a county road, she'd need a variance to do, even to build her house today, she would need a variance. So anything she pretty much does on that lot is going to require it. There is significant screening on the one side between her and her neighbor, so, you know, they shouldn't be bothered by the existing shed or the proposed shed that's there. And the fence should not be distracting on Hillside Lake Road at all, so. So with that, I'm fine with it going to public hearing. Any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
No, I'm good.
So, motion...
Motion to advertise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
So Jackie, you'll just, just confirm that other, location of the other shed? Okay. So item number four is Appeal 3978, Mid Hudson Development Corp. Mid Hudson Development Corp., 118 Ridgemont Drive, Hopewell Junction is requesting a special permit to allow 2018 cubic yards of fill to be brought on-site pursuant to section 194-75 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening, Brian.
Good evening.
Just a quick, I'll see you.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, so you've, this is the first time we're actually seeing this application, and it appears that you need to bring in this fill to do the driveway, so...
If you're able to, you can afford the house, okay? If you look at the box on the... You're able to contend with all the, 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 the,
The dogs can be attended at all times, and this, so this would be back from the parking lot, next to the cornfield, so it would be not directly next to any of our neighbors. We have looked into a type of vinyl that could go on the inside of our gate, which would basically allow for more soundproofing. It's called a fence blocker, which is a heavy-duty reinforced mass loaded vinyl, it would hang on the inside of our fence, and then that will also dampen and eliminate sounds that could be projected into the neighborhood. We are not proposing to put any kennels outside, we're not putting cleaning jobs outside, not like the typical, you know, ASPCA setup or something like that.
Jackie, did we get copies of the updated survey?
The survey?
Yeah. Because there was the, that 40-foot storage that is showing right on the property line, but I think it actually goes over the property line?
Yeah, he's moving that.
So what is that 40-foot storage and where is it moving to?
He's getting rid of it.
He's getting rid of it? Oh, okay.
You want to see this? Is that, so that's the one you got? Mine looks different, it's higher up.
Yeah, yours looks, looking for the...
There you go, yeah. That's the updated one.
The one that I have is from 1992. Is that a newer one?
Yeah, this one is...
Okay.
There you go. Oh, thank you.
Okay, I have...
No, that's the same one, isn't it?
No, this is 92.
Yeah, I think that's the same one. Oh, 2014, yours is the older one, that was originally one that you...
I have the original one.
Yeah, this is the lower one, that they just submitted this end the other day.
Do you have extra copies?
No, they just sent it.
Is that it?
They just sent that one.
Okay.
So the metal container is going?
Correct.
Okay. There's a metal trailer that you say is no longer there?
Yes, he told us that, when he told me that, when he dropped off the survey that it's gone.
Okay, so wait, this survey is dated January of 2014.
That's the latest one they have. So... Later than the one they originally submitted.
Okay, but we need a current survey that shows what's actually out there.
Yeah, they've worked, they said they've worked on that.
Oh, okay, all right.
This is the latest one they have.
So where is the closest property? Where's the closest house? That's...
So the closest house, if you look at the map, would be on, so if you were facing the building, it would be on the left side of the building.
Right.
And I don't have exact measurement of how far over it is, but it is a pretty decent amount, I'm not sure if we have the exact measurement. But I actually did call the neighbor, unfortunately she is an elderly woman, she couldn't make it to the meeting, but I did speak to Eleanor, and if it would help, I can probably definitely get a letter from her.
Yeah, it would help.
And that we did talk about this and what's in plan, that she's comfortable with it. And again, where we're going to be putting the fence and where we're going to have the entrance light are on the opposite side of where the houses are.
Okay. So what's, oh, you have an empty field next to you on the other side?
That is correct.
Okay, that's what it is.
So that's where we, that's where the entrance would be, and what side we'd like to put the fence on, so we're away from neighbors and people coming by, that everybody on the field, we're not disturbing anybody.
Okay, how many dogs are we talking about?
Yeah, I'm open to hearing what everyone's discretion is, I'm thinking no more than, you know, starting off, maybe 20, and then seem to go from there, I'm not looking to have a crazy amount of dogs, you know...
And this is just doggy daycare, they're dropping them off in the morning and, or sometime during the day, or you, this is overnight stays as well?
If you allow us overnight stays, there would be indoor overnight.
It's not up to us to tell you? You have to tell us what are you asking for?
So I would like to have morning overnight with 24-hour supervision, each kennel that we put in would have cameras, and then as well as an onsite staff member overnight to make sure the dogs are being monitored at night and being okay in their kennels. And then as far as dog daycare, we would like to designate times for pickup and drop off, so we'll limit it to 7:00 AM to 10:30 AM that dogs can come in and out, and then again, we'll burn doors back up at, you know, 4:00, and close up at 7:00, that way there's not traffic coming in and out all day, those are our pickup and drop off hours.
What, I don't see anything, maybe I'm missing it. What size is this building? How many square feet?
The building's 4,400 square feet.
You know the dimensions on it, the length and width?
Fifty by a hundred. Fifty by a hundred.
Fifty by a hundred is 500 square feet.
Oh, no, 5,000.
Sorry, 5,000, yeah.
Are we getting...
There also is like a shed, probably the gap will not be part of our business, that's not attached to us.
Are there any other structures on the property? Any, is there anything that's, normally we should be getting an updated survey, so without having the benefit of that, I need to be clear, is there anything else that's...
So the only structure down there is the main building itself, and then a red shed on type of structure, but again, that's not something that's usable to us, that is a landlord property that we're not using, and that is to the left of the building, if you're looking at the building.
So it's a 1.748 acre parcel?
So there's a one-story metal building, there's a one-story frame building, there's a metal container, there's a metal container, and three metal containers, so one is no longer there, that's, I understand, one will be moved, there's a metal container, what, what is it doing there? I mean, that metal can...
That was...
Or storage, okay.
For previous, right.
So the one-story, you're going to be renting the one-story frame building, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and the one-story metal building is the owner's property?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
I don't know who the owner is.
Can you just put your, state your name for the record?
My, 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 use of...
Okay.
The owner. So the 50 by, by a hundred buildings, which is looking to use for building daycare.
Okay.
One to the left is there, she doesn't want to use that. Behind the one, there's a little storage container inside the fence. That survey is 100% accurate, that was pretty recent. The trailer that says, says trailer is no longer there. In order to get the approval that I had gotten for the flea market, they wanted the trailer out of it, so eliminated that.
Wait, I'm confused, what flea market?
I have approvals for the flea market there from the previous tenant that was doing it.
Oh, okay.
So we're not using that.
Oh wait, you're not, you're not mixing uses here?
No, no, no.
Okay.
That's where that survey came into play. So the fencing area with the little storage is there, the trailer that's there is not there anymore.
Okay.
Okay, the metal storage container is to the far right.
Right.
Okay, whether it's over the line, a couple inches, whatever, what we're going to do is just take it and move it.
So it's not going away, you're just going to move it into the property, how far?
To meet the requirements of the setback.
What's, what is this property zoned?
B1.
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 So I don't know what that is, but it's movable, so I can just move it to whatever the requirements.
I don't see any measurements on this metal container.
It's, it's a storage container, so it's there, seven and a half wide, eight high, and 40 feet long. That's, that's the size. It's not a shed.
So what's a setback for, okay, we don't know yet.
I don't think there is one. Usually business property, you can go right to the, you can go right to the property line.
I have a natural 15...
Well, but, but, but it's ne, I don't know what the property next door is, so that's, that's where it kicks in when there's residential next door, that's what the difference is.
Well, it's formal, so I don't know what they have there.
But it might be, its use might be formal, and I don't know what it's actually zoned for. Okay, so that's what we need to, we need to get a little bit more information on this, but...
And where does this, the... Okay, so you're not looking for a path for the, you're looking for a fence now, the fence, where's the fence going to go?
The fence we would like to put on the, like slightly behind the building, on the right side, closest to the open field.
Okay, to be honest with you, I would like to see a new survey, showing all of these things, because it's like, I'm all over the place trying to figure out what's going on, so...
Nothing, nothing, is there...
No, no, I understand that, but again, it's not marked here, so I don't even know where, right side, your right side, my left side?
Okay, this, this survey that we got, this diagram, hold on, has drawn in for
us to understand where she's proposing to place things. That's not on, it's not, has not been superimposed onto this survey. Usually, when you get an updated survey, you tell the surveyor where you are proposing to put certain things, so that we understand how close they'll be to the property lines.
If you want to put on that, on the table.
Well...
Updated surveys, is what I'm looking for. Because this is so easy, because, you know, this was done about six years ago, they already have all the measurements, they can just run it through a computer much faster, they don't need to go back and redo a survey, they can just take this and move it, whatever, you know, needs to be done. They can mark it much easier, because it's already done. This is from 92, so I can understand.
Yeah, this one's from 2014.
14, six years ago, so...
It's all going to be digital, so they should be able to place on there.
Everything that we are looking for, or you guys are looking for. And for example, this is no, no longer there, but, does it say there? It's...
It just says no longer there.
But it's still there. Yeah, I think I need a new survey, to make sure that I know everything that everything is.
I would like better idea of the size of the building, you're saying 50 by 100? Looking at the sizes as drawn, it doesn't, you know, it might be 100, I see 100 both on two sides of it, but there's nothing for the width, and just using 100, it's, those sides are more than half the 100 side. So, and have an idea how many dogs you actually want, and how you're going to use the interior, so we have an idea how much space there is going to be for the dogs inside. If they're going to be overnight, I presume we're going to have some sort of more restrictive settings, and also some room that they can congregate inside or something? So I think we need an idea how inside, how you plan to lay that out, and how much space you're going to have for each of those type uses, so we can figure, I mean, and then exactly, you say it's going to be insulated, but maybe some information exactly on how you plan on insulating it, so we can judge, you know? 20 dogs might not be too bad, if you go up to, request 30 or 40, it could get pretty loud, I don't know, so we're going to need some more specific information as that too, I think. Okay?
There's no grooming here? It's literally just...
No grooming.
Okay.
So during the day, the dogs going to be inside or outside?
Inside, the only time that they would be let outside was for a bathroom break, you know, so they'd be let into a small area kind of stage, in a group of maybe five dogs, supervisor and attendant, they go outside, they go to the bathroom, once they're all finished, they will clean up after the dogs, and then the dogs will be moved back inside, the next group would go outside, until everyone has been walked around at a given amount of time.
So it's going to be a run?
Yeah. No runs, no kennels, no one outside.
And this would of course be like two, three times a day, basically?
Yeah, so probably every, I would say about four hours. Of course, you know, if we have a younger dog that's, you know, under a year, they obviously need more hi-grips, they would be accessible to those, but yes, for the average bill, probably about three, four times a day.
So your application says the property line is about 150 feet from potential house to be built. Now where is that?
So you're actually across the street from the row, out from the front of the building, they are proposing a building there, and after we put into play...
Across Hosner Mountain Road?
Yes.
Okay, okay. That's what I've shown.
I'm the real estate agent, I can suggest something, last time we were here...
All right, hold on, folks, let's, have you two step away from the microphone, so let's let this other gentleman speak at the microphone.
My name is Damon Haddad, I'm the real estate agent, representing the owner. Last time we were here, they showed us a Google map of the property, that might give you a better idea of the, you know...
Last time you were here?
Yeah, we were here for the...
Thinking for the planning board.
Oh, you were at the planning board, okay.
We've been over for this for a couple months, so I was wondering if you can, if somebody can log into the system, maybe show you what the building and the property looks like. We're looking at 1.7 acres, it's a large building, it's 5,000 square feet metal building.
Right, usually we can tell from the survey what's going on, and, you know, I'm relatively familiar with this area here, so I'm not too worried about it.
Listening to the questions, it seems like, you know, the survey is the most accurate survey we have, and it's exactly what Mike says, it's nothing changed.
Except that there's a trailer that's no longer there, and there's, you know, so it has changed, yeah.
The trailer that was removed, right? Yeah. But again, look at it visual rather than a drawing, it gives you a better idea, in addition to the survey. I, maybe just a suggestion, so it's up to you, I would just maybe...
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm still looking for a new survey, because I'm just guessing at this point, so, and I don't like to guess.
Aziz, you wanted to see proposed, the proposals on the survey, right?
I need, I would like to see a new survey, and on the new survey, whatever is being proposed, so that everything is clear and clean to me, not a 92 survey, not a 2014 survey, but a 2020 survey.
Well, and again, where's the 40-foot storage going to go? I, we need to see that, because we need to make sure it's going to be the required setbacks.
I agree.
This is not a public hearing, so unless you're speaking part of this team?
I have a suggestion. I know sometimes if we take a survey like that, and they break into proposals, or it's going how far it is...
No, we'll get a new one, and we'll...
Yeah, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
So, if you're...
Thank you.
And if you're before the planning board, I'm not trying to second guess them, so but you must be providing some more specific plans for them, so just, just a general idea.
So the planning board directed them to, the planning board referred them over to the ZBA, because they really need the vari, we have to decide the variances first before...
I understand that, but I want to have an idea of what's going on, I'm not, don't looking for everything that you have to do there, I'm not looking at, I just want to get an idea, so to see whether the variances will be appropriate or not, like they're looking for.
Yeah, they're significant variances.
Yes.
Yeah.
You're required to have 150 feet, and you're looking for a variance of 120 feet, 101 feet, 114 feet, so there, there are significant variances, so, that's why it's going to, it's, it's very helpful if you can get a letter from the neighbor, okay? Again, the other side's got a field, so I get that.
This is the neighbor, but their mom gave the number out, and she's lying over to neighbors in the boy house.
That helps, thank you very much, okay? So now you, now I understand you are actually connected to the application, but just as a neighbor, so, okay, um, so yeah, if you, the survey, they should have it digitally, you should be able to update this very quickly, and then from there we'll know exactly what you need, we'll advertise for it, etc., so we'll see you again next month?
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you guys so much for your time, I really appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, as I said earlier, there is no number eight, so we are up to item number nine. Appeal 3983, Catherine Lieber, Catherine Lieber, 5 Poplar Street, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a one-foot sideline variance for a proposed generator pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Hi. Give us one second.
Very good, thank you.
Is there a setback for Jackie?
Jackie?
Okay, so you're proposing a generator, where's, your utility connection is, I'm presuming?
Right there.
It's gonna be right there?
Right.
Okay.
That's why we picked that spot, yeah.
Here, let me get your application.
Motion to advertise?
Somebody wants to start his argument.
Is there screening on site, is this gonna be visible to your neighbor?
No, no, they can put bushes around it.
You're going to put bushes, or there are bushes?
Well, there's bushes in front of it to the road.
Okay.
And there's bushes next to it, that one neighbor can see it.
They can?
Yeah, I mean, it's clear from one side to the other.
Okay. How close is that neighbor's house?
Well, let's see, there's seven, probably 35 feet, probably, I don't know his distance from his line. We're 17.92 to the property line, but then he has, and I don't know his survey. So, it's probably about the same, 15, 17 feet.
Alright, you're 17 feet to your...
17.92 to our property line from the house.
Actually, it says 17.08, and 17.86 on the other side.
I see 17.92.
Yeah, 17.92.
They wrote on it, they wrote on it when they...
Oh, they wrote over it, okay, I see that.
It's hard, it was very hard to see it, yeah, the 17.92, so we're short, what's the problem is, we're short eight inches.
Correct.
For the 15-foot requirement.
Yeah, just a one foot.
Yeah, it's a one foot to, because we can't get the eight inches.
We round up to make sure.
What is the required side yard in this development?
15.
Okay, alright, because normally it would be 25, and so 17 is, okay.
Eight inches, so we can...
Eight inches.
Okay.
So...
Motion to advertise?
Is there a second to advertise?
Second, there we go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you so much.
So you need, Jackie will give you your information on your sign, you'll need a sign, and then we'll see you next month. Yeah, they, yeah. Okay, but can you please make sure that we get a copy of your HOA approval?
You have, I have it.
Oh, we haven't already?
I think it's attached right here, right?
Yeah, it should be attached to the package.
I have two surveys, and, yep, there it is, got it, okay. Alright, good, we'll see you next month.
Motion to adjourn, anybody?
Motion, second?
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned, happy holidays, everyone.